Okay, welcome everyone. We got, we have, can we bear with us a second? I think we have it. You got it? Perfect. So, we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Campbell City Council for Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. To protect our constituents, city officials and city staff, the city reminds all those in attendance that physical distancing and face coverings are required. I call to order this meeting. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication as compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. This council meeting is being livestreamed on channel twenty-six, the city's website and on YouTube. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
President.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Here, thank you very much. And I'll, I'll lead the pledge there if you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, foundation, and the freedom, the liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no special presentations or proclamations. Under communications and petitions, I'll ask the city attorney to report out on any earlier closed sessions.
And we have nothing to report out.
Okay, thank you very much. We move to oral requests. The portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda. And if you'd like to address the council, we request you fill out a speaker card if you're un-present here, but it's not required. It's limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. I'll start with speaker cards for anybody in attendance. I have one from Shawn Mendelson. Shawn, would you like to come up to the podium here, please? And you'll have two minutes once you get started.
Gotcha. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Shawn Mendelson and I'm a thirteen-year Campbell resident living on Virginia Avenue with two children in the Campbell Elementary School District. I'm here today because of my kids. Last year, my fourteen-year-old son asked me a gut-wrenching question. Will I be alive when the planet stops working because of climate change impact? His question was a wake-up call. So, in October, I became a trained climate reality leader. And this month, I joined Mothers Out Front Silicon Valley. My training reminded me that we must deal with climate-intensified fires, hurricanes, and flooding for at least thirty years. If we delay action on the climate emergency, we are giving our kids and the folks that haven't been born yet to an uninhabitable planet. But there is good news. If we take concerted action against climate change now, we can turn it around, and the key is local action. How can we, as a city, meet the challenge of our time? The first step is to resolve to create a climate action plan. Of the fifteen Santa Clara County cities, thirteen have already adopted clear climate action plans. Campbell is one of only two that have not. I'm here to help change that. I ask you to build upon the excellent reach code you passed in two thousand and nineteen and commit to laying out a clear plan for a climate-safe future. I've spoken with local groups, including Mothers Out Front, Climate Reality, Sierra Club, Campbell's High School Students Today, and others about forming a community committee to help the city with this process. As a first step, I urge you to declare an official resolution to make a climate action plan. I also kindly ask to have a meeting with the mayor and the city manager as soon as possible. I've provided you with my contact information via email and am devoted to assisting with this process. We can do this. Morgan Hill, with about the same population as Campbell, made the same resolution in May of last year, and their climate action plan went into effect December fifteenth, just seven months later. Please consider the effects our present actions will have after the people in this room are gone and think about how your potential grandchildren remember our actions at this time. Let's be on the right side of history. We have an opportunity to temper the fears of our youth and preserve a livable climate for them and their children. Today, as soon as they mercifully posted a summation of what I just said, you can see it in the editor column. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Shawn. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak? I don't see anybody else in the chamber that wants to speak? So, how about on Zoom?
The first sign-up name I have is Stephanie Morris.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. My name is Stephanie Morris. I grew up locally and have been a Campbell homeowner for eighteen years. I'm a small business owner in Campbell and a mother of a twelve-year-old son. I am here with Mothers Out Front in support and gratitude. Two years ago, when Campbell passed the electric reach code, it was an amazing opportunity that you took. And new construction is now set up for electric appliances. I've also done my part to electrify my own home over the years. Now that the climate crisis has clearly escalated, what is the next step? It's clear that we still have a work to do, all of us. It's clear that the federal government is going to move too slowly, if at all, to address the climate crisis. And local governments, such as cities and counties, actually have more influence on what happens day-to-day. But reach codes just aren't enough. We won't reach our goal of reducing global emissions enough to halt the progress of the climate crisis. The next step, a climate action plan, or CAP. Climate action plans are comprehensive roadmaps that outline the specific activities that a city will undertake to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Almost all other local cities have implemented a CAP, and so it's time for Campbell now to take action. CIPs are not only climate-friendly, they also provide economic benefits. These include decarbonizing existing buildings, along with associated energy savings, increasing electric vehicle charging access, and other actions that we can implement now to ensure that all children inherit a livable future, as we also improve climate equity in our community. When we picnic or hike, we don't leave trash behind us. We leave the place as clean or cleaner than we found it. The same goes for the climate. If we don't work to clean it up now, it will very soon be too late. Children don't have a vote, and they will inherit the results of our action or inaction. Please take action and create an official resolution to create a climate action plan for Campbell. I will be emailing you a toolkit and several example links. Mothers Out Front pledges to help support the city of Campbell with the climate action plan, and I volunteer my time to assist with the process. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any other people wishing to speak through Zoom?
There's two other hands raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Dashiel Leeds.
Okay. There you are, Dashiel.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes, please speak as loud as you can, please.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Dashiel Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Thank you so much, Shawn and Stephanie, for your comments. The Sierra Club strongly supports the creation of a climate action plan. I think the previous speakers before me have covered the reasons why very well. I'd like to talk a little bit about what Morgan Hill did and why it might be a model for Campbell going forward. First, critically, what I think Morgan Hill did is they decided not to go with a consultant, and this saved them an absolute ton of money. They actually engaged in this process with only a twenty-thousand-dollar budget and created a very streamlined climate action plan of twenty-six pages that focused on the highest emitting sectors of the city. So, I think that sort of streamlined approach, not going with a consultant, having a minimum budget for staff time, and creating a robust and streamlined plan is a really good way to hit the ground running, get a fast turnaround, and begin working on those high-impact actions as soon as possible. So, thank you so much. The Sierra Club would be happy to assist. We've been involved in CAPs in other cities. We have some resources, and we look forward to working with the community members on this also. Thanks so much for listening, and we hope you adopt a resolution starting the creation of a climate action plan going forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dashiel. Are there any other people who wish to speak?
The last hand is Raja Palola.
Okay. Raja, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Perfectly, yes.
I'm traveling and I'm overseas. If you folks can't hear me, please let me know. Okay, this is regarding the general plan update, mainly the housing element. I know these are two different things which we are trying to club into one. I couldn't comment at the last meeting because I couldn't join in time. One thing I want to highlight is, as much as we are all talking about closer to being commute and all, and trying to concentrate all of our new development near the VTA stations, we are not talking about schools. If you're trying to put five thousand units, even if you take ten percent of it, that's like five hundred kids, right? There is not much area for schools there and all. Capri Elementary is the biggest elementary school in the entire Campbell, and they are running under capacity because they don't have much enrollment. And it is located in the south side of Campbell, but there is no new developments coming. Like, if you see that map that the city staff has prepared on the south side, there is absolutely no development. So, you know, as much as we all like to have this housing coming in, but we should also support the kids that are coming in, right? Okay, you can easily go to work, but what do you do with your kids? First, you have to drop your kids in school, then you have to go to work, right? So, somewhere that balance is not striking to me. Now, all that discussion, I have walked through the whole YouTube thing about the last meeting, the city council meeting, and I can't see that. And I see that Dell Avenue, I know some of you have like, oh, I love Scotty's and all, but there are like tons of automotive repair shops on that Winchester boulevard, right? So, I don't think Campbell needs all of them. People from all the surrounding cities come there. I mean, we are kind of working as a, that whole Winchester and that railway tracks and the industrial area is working like the junkyard of other cities. You know, we don't have to be the junkyard for other cities. Las Gatos can have its own junkyard kind of thing. So, I mean, Dell Avenue area is a good place to get that new development, and Capri is so close to Dell Avenue, you know, we'll be able to support. It has already facilities that it is running under capacity then. So, I wanted to highlight that.
Okay.
Since I couldn't attend the last meeting.
Thank you very much, Raja.
Thank you.
Are there any other people wishing to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the last one.
Okay. Thank you very much. In that case, we'll, here, we'll move on from oral requests and go to council announcements. Due to continuing effects of COVID, City Hall remains closed to the public with the exception of city council and commission meetings and certain special meetings, as noticed. Many services are available online, and people may call departments directly to schedule appointments as needed. At this time, there is no firm date for reopening daily access to all city services. Santa Clara VTA is holding a virtual meeting, community meeting, on Wednesday, January nineteenth at six PM, that's tomorrow, to discuss an affordable housing project at the Winchester Station in partnership with the county's Office of Supportive Housing. You visit vta.org/winchesterdevelopment for additional project information. On January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is Thursday this week, the Planning Commission will meet to review and provide a recommendation to the city council on the Tier One housing opportunity sites to be included in Campbell's plan for housing and the city's envisioned Campbell General Plan update, and to provide feedback on key principles to guide which housing opportunity site should be designated for mixed-use development. Members of the public may participate remotely by Zoom or attend in person as space allows while maintaining ongoing face covering and social distancing at the Campbell City Hall Council Chambers, Seventy North First Street in Campbell. Please join us and provide feedback. You can also attend virtually on Zoom. There will be a special council meeting next Tuesday, January twenty-fifth at six thirty PM to conduct a public hearing to consider several potential housing sites for the housing element. The housing element is the city's long-range plan for producing the city's share of housing. Join us on Tuesday, February first at seven forty-five PM. This will be the third in a series of four public meetings to obtain public input on the future of redrawing the city council election district boundaries. The community's input is extremely important, and we encourage all residents to participate in the redistricting progress. And these meetings will be held in person at Campbell City Hall. The above meetings are also accessible via Zoom webinar. If you'd like additional information about any of these meetings, please visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. So, we'll now move on to consent calendar. I've had requests already to move items, pull items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Is there any member of council, staff, or the public that would like to remove any other items?
Nothing from the public.
Seeing none, entertain a motion for items one through eleven, keeping in mind that for item two, motion should be to adopt the revised minutes as presented in the desk item today.
Also move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, so, motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilmember Gibbons. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. Thank you very much. So, we go to item twelve, Councilmember Gibbons. You asked to pull that one, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. So, I'm not sure I have actual questions for staff. Staff provided me information this afternoon, which answered the questions I had. Thank you very much. I would like to have a discussion with council, so I don't know if anyone else would like to ask questions at this point. I have no questions at this point.
See, no questions? So, if you have comments or did you?
Do you want to go public or? Do we need?
Yeah, so, well, thank you. See, it's not that easy. Open up, anybody in the public wish to speak on item twelve, which is the consultant agreement with management partners? Seeing none and none online?
None online.
Bring it back to the council for discussion? Please.
So, thank you. So, this, this was a tough one to, to consider for discussion tonight. I came out of the blue. There was no council review or preparation or discussion. I certainly appreciate that in the process of making staffing transitions, some issues have come to light, and it doesn't surprise me. And saying things are out of date and should be corrected and updated makes sense to me. When I did read through the full scope of the consultant's proposal, it reinforced my concerns and questions. I, it implied that, the scope implies that the solution is to add staff. And I don't think we know enough to have that built-in conclusion. I think it depends on what they find out, what works within the city. I don't know enough about purchasing and procurement to, to have any kind of, of recommendation or anything. I think we need to know and get an assessment of what can be done better. But I don't think we want to walk into this expecting to have an additional staff. And that tied into my other questions, which was the, why we have to do it now? And why did we have to have it done for the budget by the budget time? And it, your answer was, it has to be done by the budget. So, if you have to put staff in on the budget, it'll be in the budget. So, it's a little bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy. So, that was where I was coming from, at trying to understand why now? And what's the right decision now?
Vice Mayor?
So, if I could add on to that, I, I do see this coming sort of out of left field. There was no advance notice to council that this was coming forward. And while I understand there's value in doing a study of this type, I'm having a hard time understanding the timing of it, given that one of the main individuals who is involved in the purchasing system, the position's been vacant for two years. So, it seems to me that it should have come forward sooner than, than at the last minute. I'm concerned about the timing with, a, a study like this involves all city departments, and this is adding to me a major work plan to, to their list of things to accomplish in this fiscal year. And I just don't think that currently there's the bandwidth to, for staff to fully participate in, in, in a study like this at midstream. I, I really feel that this should have come through the regular budget cycle. I'm concerned about the amount of money for a consultant and the fact that it's not, it's being recommended as, as a sole source rather than through a competitive bid process for the amount of money. And the other thing that I also feel strongly about is that the assistant city manager position is currently vacant and that that individual should have some input and some, be, be fully involved in the process and, and the study. So, because that, because the purchasing function has historically been split between finance and, and the city manager's office and, and for, for good reasons, because it provides not only a separation of duties, but oversight by the city manager, who is by code the, the budget authority for the city. So, I, I understand the value in it, but I just, I can't support it at this time because of, of the cost and of the timing of it.
I can address some, a couple of.
Before, any, if you wish. Councilmember Rob, okay, please, please direct your point.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll try to go through each point and, and each concern. I, I do agree that I are good concerns, like, like, good questions. In, in a, in a, our guards to a predetermined, a predetermined exclusion that we may need additional personnel to put in, into the upcoming, up to be opposed budget to height our purchasing and, our, our, our purchasing needs. It, 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 it could be a one potential outcome. It's, it's not the only, it's, it's, it's not the only outcome. It's, it's, it's certainly not a pre-determined outcome, but a one potential, one potential outcome of this work could be that, that it's shown that based upon what we need to purchase for goods, for a different apartments, different contracts, that it, it, it may indeed be, and I, I, I tell thing to, to, of, of pulling additional personnel who are, who are either part-time, half-time, that are, that are really dedicated to purchasing. Purchasing can be quite, it can be quite complex. I've, I've, however seen of purchasing in two, a different public, two different public agencies, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm certainly not a purchasing expert, just due to the detail, the time it takes, the come, come, the, the, actually, of the role. It's, 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 it's traditionally been either a deputy or a ACM role, but that, that, also may not be the ideal fit, again, based upon the time and detail and the, and the complex technical nature of the role. So, so while additional personnel, maybe one potential outcome, it's, again, it's not a redrawn conclusion. The, the contract that we hope to, after the contract that we hope to enter into would help us to determine what we, what we really need in purchasing a function to be, to be efficient, to be active, but, but also to make a best, best purchasing process as well. And, and, and so, since on October, I've held the purchasing role on a, on an, on an interim basis to, to one, cover it, you know, until we either could fill the ACM role, or also to pull in any additional help that we may need. Over, over those past, a couple of months, I've observed, I've observed some, some things that certainly could be improved, but again, I'm, I'm, I'm not a purchasing expert. I think that a company, a company like, a company like, kind of like, management partners, who I've, how I've done this type of work for different agencies, could be quite helpful in terms of the, a tiny of it. I, I, I do agree that it is a traditional work, but there's not ever a time to improve a, it's, 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 it's a thing that's a one, that's, 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 that I feel that's headed to, to be improved by, by cutting out. By, um, by getting outside consultant help. Um, it will also reduce the in internal time that we need to go through processes, um, the different programs to really make a complete, a complete assessment of the function. Um, so by, by cutting that outside help right now, um, it, it will indeed take some, some things off our plate. I mean, there, there will be a role that in internal departments will, will play in the project. But getting that outside consultant help will also help us out as well. Um, we're attempting to get council's okay tonight. Um, in in, in cases of then determine that we don't get, that we don't got either the right personnel, the right, the right sources, the right programs um, to really achieve, again, a effective purchasing of an effective purchasing of function. And if, if we felt that, you know, that did now need to be addressed, that we could put them any, any request into the upcoming FY twenty-three opposed budget. Um, it's a, it, it would be a social, it would be a social a contract. And it's, it's, it's only due to, it's a, it's a consulting agreement for a specialized services. Um, I, um, I know, um, this to be a, a good, um, a company who's, who's, who's helped on a different public agencies to this before. A, um, a RFP or an RFQ, it, it, it could in, indeed achieve either a better price or a, a better proposal. Um, but is how is on a type of things also take a time expense? Um, there's no one inherent, there's no current P that it will also abuse a better outcome. Um, so I, um, again, I, um, acknowledge this to be a company that does a, that does a good, good work in, in, in purchasing. Um, I feel that it would be helpful. What's? And, um, um, I, I, I understand if, if there are concerns at this particular time, um, I hope I, I hope I've been able to address those concerns. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm certainly also here to address any Okay. Questions as well.
Thank you. So, so let me ask, can I infer from comments earlier that there are not three votes to move forward at this time? Is that fair? Is that a fair assessment? And we are in the unique position of having an even number tonight, so that's two, two people. If that's the case, just want to bring your awareness, we have alternatives in the staff report of um, not entering to an agreement at this time and waiting for the budget cycle. Of not entering into an agreement and doing procedures internally or something else. Does anybody want to comment on, on a preferred action if you're not going to support the the item as is?
My suggestion, what I would prefer is to wait and, and have it come through the, the, the regular budget cycle. And, um, again, to me, uh, it's a major imposition right now. Adding work, uh, uh, to me, this is a major work plan and adding it to staff's existing work plan. It all should be developed with, through the budget work plans. And, and the, the main, a main person who's involved in the purchasing for the city isn't, it, it, the position is vacant and there's no one in the city manager's office to participate in this other than the city manager and they're stretched then, planning a stretch thing, public works that's stretched, stretched then. So I just feel that it's not the right time to be doing this and, and that's why I can't support it.
Okay. Councilmember Gibbons?
Uh, I, I, I am in the same assessment as the vice mayor. I do think it's an appropriate task to be undertaken. Um, I do think doing it at the regular budget cycle for much of what the vice mayor has just said in terms of the implications and workloads of the other departments. We were always trying to be very careful about changing the workloads and focus. And this has got a pretty short timeframe in order to get it into the budget cycle as it is. Um, so, um, I would be supportive of, um, putting it into the budget cycle coming up. And I would also make a, just an additional comment, which vice mayor also mentioned, which is, I don't think a sole source contract should be on the consent calendar. Um, I think it's a, it is a large amount of money. Um, but putting a sole source on a consent calendar seems to be something that I would have difficulty supporting and just on that basis alone.
Okay. So before we go to motion, councilmember Lopez, any comments?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I, I, I agree with some of what's been, a lot of what's been said. I, I guess I'm stuck feeling like, and I'm, I'm fine with, with waiting for the budget cycle for this, like, come back up. Uh, I'm stuck still feeling like I need more information and, and it, it, it's funny, we don't have to get all of it tonight, but um, on, uh, just just finding the, the need for this. And I'd like to get a better understanding of the issues that have come up. Um, the, the memo doesn't get into those specifics. Um, but so given that, I, I, I wouldn't even feel that I have enough information to, uh, to, to, to go on tonight to support this, I'm, I'm fine with, with waiting for, for the cycle.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion? It looks like we're item one of the alternative alternatives for the, for the motion. So we'd like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we not enter into a consultant agreement for procurement services at this time and instead wait to include in the FY twenty-three budget.
Second.
So motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by councilmember Gibbons. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, excuse me, councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez? Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. Okay, so that will come back to us at that time. Thank you, Director Fuentes. We move to item thirteen, which is a resolution commending Officer Darwin Okamoto upon his retirement after twenty-five years of service to the city of Campbell. I see your video just popped up. There's, there's Officer Okamoto, welcome.
Thank you.
Rob, just let me, let me just make a comment and then we'll, we'll go around and um, this is a resolution to, to commend the officer on his service. This is after retirement of twenty-five years of service to Campbell, which is great. I mean, one of the nice things we see here, especially in PD, are a lot of long-term employees and it speaks well, I think, for um, the department and for the people that the department brings in. Uh, what struck me since nineteen ninety-seven, many different assignments, but what struck me is nineteen years consecutive on SWAT from two thousand and two on, which is amazing. So thank you for that in particular is quite an accomplishment and appreciate that. And from everything I've heard and know, um, just a reputation of, of outstanding service, not only to the department, but to community as a whole. So from, from my standpoint, I'll say congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service. Let me see if anybody else here would like to comment before we give you a chance to, to say some words as well.
So, uh, thank you. I, um, officer, I, you know, I, I, I've always said that I don't, I can't imagine what it means to be a police officer and serving um, our community and the incredible responsibility and needs of our community. And for you to have provided that to the Campbell community for twenty-five years, never mind us, the SWAT team um, is extraordinary and the value can never be under, overstated. It is just a great deal of appreciation for your commitment to our community and the quality of making a difference in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Hi Darwin. It seems in the blink of an eye, twenty-five years ago, you were sworn in and here you are retiring. It's just kind of hard to believe. Um, but I, I just want to thank you for your service to our community. Uh, you've been an asset. You've always served the citizens well and, um, you're going to be missed in, in our, in our community and in the police department. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Um, I, I want to, of course, thank you for your service and, and echo what's been said. And, and I'll just add one thing that really jumped out at me is how over the years, the clear commitment to, to teaching and, and mentoring, uh, as, as well the next generation. So not only do we have the benefit of your twenty-five years of service, but now the different roles, armor, defensive and instructor, Taser instructor, um, also to bring up the, the next generation to continue, um, the, the high quality we, we expect in our police department. So thank you for, for, for your service and the ways you've given back.
Okay. Darwin, before, before you say anything, we have somebody else in the chamber here that would like to speak first and then we'll open it up and you can certainly make comments. Cheaper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor. I just wanted to, uh, give my appreciation to the council. It's quite an accomplishment. Twenty-five years. Two of us actually went to SWAT school together twenty years ago. That's a story to tell. Final night. Also, the logo has been all this twenty-five years. Quite a bit of that has already been stated here. So on behalf of the police department, I just want to congratulate the also the retirement sake of all the contributions.
Thank you, chief. I think, I think that's about the most. We're going to get that story in a recorded meeting, right? Correct? I'll have to talk offline. So I'll put it to the public and, and Darwin, you're certainly welcome to, to speak and say a few words if you like.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, work in Campbell. It's been my honor and a, and a privilege to serve with such fine men and women in the department. And as well as with the folks from the city. It's just been a roller coaster ride. Had fun for twenty-five years. Yes, it went quick. Um, but enjoyed every minute of it. Uh, the citizens of this city are just wonderful, very supportive. And it was my privilege to, uh, serve them and protect them to the best of my ability. And again, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, certainly. Madam Clark, anybody else that wishes to speak on this?
I don't have any hands.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll just comment too, that in a, in a, in a contentious times, you know, i- it says a lot that, that the public thinks so highly of Campbell PD. Uh, uh, that's unique, right? And that's, I think, because of the people that are interfacing in the field in particular, that, that serve well and show respect to the people and, and, and it's, it's unique. It's unique and we benefit from it tremendously. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to, uh, for the resolution? To adopt the resolution?
So I move that we adopt a resolution commending Officer Darwin Okamoto upon his retirement after twenty-five years of service to the city of Campbell.
I'll second. So motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by councilmember Lopez. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. So again, thank you. Enjoy your retirement, well deserved.
Thank you.
Take care. And we'll move to item fourteen, a resolution commending Corinne Shin upon her retirement. We thought twenty-five years was a lot after twenty-eight. I've been corrected earlier, twenty-eight and a half, as you said, years of service with the city of Campbell. And, uh, boy, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll comment, I'll comment Corinne as well, because I, I, I worked with you back when I was on the, on the planning commission. Twenty-eight years and twenty-eight and a half years is very commendable for anybody. That's tremendous. So thank you so much. That's going to be the development department, but I remember, you know, working with you when you're supporting the commission. You know, you've supported other commissions over that time. Um, we, we talked years ago about dogs and had no dogs and getting dogs and all that. So, um, enjoy those memories. So thank you so much for all your service. Um, and congratulations to retirement, well deserved. Would anybody here like to make comments? And I'll certainly allow you to make a comment as well if you'd like. Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. So Corinne and I have history, as the phrase goes. I think, do we decide whether you started at the city first or I started at the city first? Whichever it is, we've known each other that long. Um, while I was at the redevelopment agency and then seventeen years on the planning commission and you were there. And I, it's impossible to realize that it's been twenty-eight and a half years. Because when you have an, the, the planning department, the community development department is one of the most important community facing organizations and departments in our city. You get all the excitement of new projects and new residents and all the challenges of new residents and new projects. And you carry through with that with great ease and comfort to whoever came to the counter. You attended the meetings and just did the most incredible job of helping us manage the meetings and writing the minutes of the meetings, which are so important for the uh, records of the community. And, um, just being such a value to everyone who worked with you, the staff and, uh, the department and the staff throughout the city. Um, I just, uh, I'm so pleased for you that you're retiring. I'm envious. Uh, that you've got this wonderful opportunity to play with your dogs. Uh, and well deserved and, um, take full advantage of it. And, um, I look forward to hearing stories, uh, of what you've been doing while you're enjoying this phase of your life. So congratulations and thank you so much, Corinne.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Corinne, for your exemplary service. It, again, twenty-eight and a half years has gone by in the blink of an eye. It's hard to believe that time flies so, so quickly, but here we are. And I just, not only did you support the planning staff and assisted other departments and was always provided excellent customer service. You also supported the planning commission, which is a huge undertaking and doing minutes for that many, many years. Um, it is, is a testament to, to your ability and, and your skills. And, and I want to thank you for that. And your shoes are going to be difficult to fill. But enjoy your retirement and enjoy your dog, dogs, I think it is.
Dogs now, right?
And, um, hopefully our, our paths will cross sometime. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I think you could, twenty and a half years is incredible. And, uh, the vice mayor's Lord's right out of my mouth, which is that you've left big streets to fill. Um, clearly, and, um, I, I've enjoyed reading, uh, your minutes. I didn't have the benefit of, uh, being able to, uh, learn from that. It's been a, a big value add to the council and to our decision-making process. Um, so just thank you and, and enjoy the time.
Okay. And I tell you, Corinne, there's a comment in here, six hundred and fifty meetings or so. I tell you what, I'm thinking that the person closest to you is councilmember Gibbons, probably six years, and that's like half. So I think the record is really, um, it's yours. It's yours. I don't think anybody's going to beat you. Rob, did you, did you, your setup, so I wanted to see if you wanted to speak before we open it up to the public? Director Eastwood?
Oh, really fast. My, again, I'm relatively new here. Your exposure to Corinne goes far beyond me, but I'll just say as a newbie, uh, it was much easier to come in department with Corinne supporting me. Uh, you're absolutely right. Those shoes will be super hard to fill. And my understanding, her, her reputation was so good as a, a clerk, a care and feeding commission. Uh, other cities would seek out her services over the years. I mean, that's rare. I have never heard of that before. So, uh, to be commended, number one. And the last thing I just wanted to add, we're on, we've been on a mad dash in community development for years to try and uh, push everything electronic. And Corinne has been so central to that, uh, helping scanning things and indexing things. So anyways, uh, when I, when I started, she helped me onboard. I was given an org chart that showed how the, uh, you know, the ups and downs of the department over the year. The one constant was Corinne Shin for twenty-eight years. So. The one constant was Corinne Shin for twenty eight years. So, uh, so it is a big gap. It's going to take a while to fill. But I'll just say she felt so guilty, you know, uh, for the last couple of weeks on leaving. But after twenty eight years, she more than deserves those green pastures with her dog. So, I'll close it up there. Thank you very much, council, for acknowledgement of Corinne.
Thank, thank you. So, open to the public. Corinne, would you like to say anything? Or you're more than welcome?
It's different on that side, isn't it?
It's very weird. My position was really to support my team and, you know, make sure things in the background were going well. So, I really do appreciate Campbell for the twenty eight and a half years I've been here. I appreciate the people. They've come and they've gone and there's really interesting people, good people, hardworking people, my department. I, I'm, one thing I'm sorry about is not to work with Rob longer because he's a great director and I think he's going to take us in a good direction. So, he's been really kind to me as a, as his admin. And I just want to thank all of you, the council. I've worked with Ann Bybee all the years. She, she swore me in when I became an employee. Seligman was here already. And, uh, thank you. It's very nice to be recognized by the council and the staff and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Welcome. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your doggies too.
Oh, I will. Thank you.
Madam Clark, is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak?
Do you have any signed up speakers? And they don't show any hands on the screen.
So, we ask for a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council commending Corinne Shin upon her retirement after twenty eight and a half years of service to the city of Campbell.
So, motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. So, congratulations again. Enjoy.
We'll move to public hearings and introductions and ordinances, item fifteen, public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution directing the community development director to proceed with abatement of hazardous vegetation. And Director Eastwood, are you presenting? I have down here Daniel Fama, but it.
This is, hi, Robbie Steward, Community Development Director. It's a pretty eighteen item. It comes to you every year, allows the county to pursue debatement on a number of properties. I have nothing to add beyond what's in the report, but I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions from council for Director Eastwood? Seeing none, open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion?
I'd make a motion?
Please.
That the city council adopt a resolution directing the community development director to proceed with the abatement of hazardous vegetation by the Santa Clara County Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Councilmember Lopez. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. So, that passes. Thank you. Move on to new business, item sixteen. Thank you, Director Eastwood, by the way. New, new business item sixteen, a resolution amending the agreement for the city manager services. And I think we, oh, here we, we have acting human resources manager, Selena Flores.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Selena Flores, acting HR manager. I'm here to recommend that the city council adopt a resolution amending the agreement to the city manager services. The city of Campbell entered into an agreement for city manager services with Brian Leventhal in December two thousand sixteen. Per the terms of the agreement, the city council is authorized to make amendments to the compensation of the city manager. The attached resolution authorizes an amendment to the salary provisions and performance review period of the agreement for the city manager services. As a result of the two thousand twenty one labor negotiations, all bargaining units, including department heads, were afforded a three percent salary increase. For all but one unit, the increase commenced retroactively on the first full pay period after July first, two thousand twenty one. This resulted in a salary compaction issue with the classification of police chief per section four point three C one of the personnel rules and regulations requiring the city manager's salary to be ten percent above the classification of police chief. The attached amendment agreement reflects an annual salary of two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and four dollars and eighty cents per year, which is ten percent over the salary rate of the police chief as of July first, two thousand twenty one. As a result of the retroactivity of the adjustment to the city manager's compensation, the city shall pay city manager a one-time payment of four thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents on or before February third, two thousand twenty-two as retroactive compensation for the period of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one to January ninth, two thousand twenty-two. At this time, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of, of staff? Any questions? I, I, I have one question and, and maybe Bill, this, this might be something for you. I have no, no issue with the three percent and all that. That's, that's almost mandated, but by the way, we, we have the structure. But this is also changing the timeframe for reviews to a fiscal year. The only thing I had about that was that the, the way it's written, it specifically says that we done in May. It seemed to me it would just be better to, to change it from a calendar year review to a review that coincides with the fiscal year. Just in case there's some scheduling conflict or something of urgency, we do it in May or June or whenever it's appropriate to do it, but tied to the fiscal year. Is that, is that an issue to change wording to that effect?
No, that would not be an issue at all.
Okay. So, when that comes back, that would just be my input. Give us a little more flexibility because we never know what's coming up on the, on the plate. There's no other questions? We'll ask the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item?
No sign of speakers.
None. We'll bring it back to council for discussion or for a motion?
I'd make a motion that the city council, I gotta scroll up here. That the city council adopt a resolution amending the agreement with the city manager services with the annotation to change May to coinciding with the city's fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second. Yeah, second.
You win. So, it's a motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Councilmember Lopez. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Selena.
Thank you.
So, move to item seventeen, to consider economic development strategy from the Economic Development Subcommittee. I believe the presenter is going to be City Manager Brian Leventhal.
Yes, thank you. Get my computer up and running here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to be before you again this evening. This item, as the staff report explains, has been culmination of work with the Economic Development Subcommittee and staff to really look at what we're doing over the short term. Staff report highlights that the long-term economic development strategy is going to be tied really with the development, the general plan and the policies that are stemming from that. That's going to take some time. But the committee really began to ask questions of what do we do now as we see vacancies, as we see businesses come and go? What can we do to really stimulate that economy in the short term? And, and the, the staff report delineates, uh, some presentation they received. It's also included as attachment B in the staff report from our sales tax consultant. That was just one piece of the equation and the staff report tries to highlight that the, that the committee believed that this is just one piece and it's not just about sales tax and that it's about many other things, including property tax, transient occupancy tax. Uh, and what in the staff reports termed the agglomeration effect that's created by clustering of businesses. There was discussion about incubator companies. There was discussion about startups. There was discussion about clustering businesses that, that were similarly situated. All of these things can create some, some beneficial effects and the committee recognized that. So, I, I wanted to make sure it was clear that, that this discussion wasn't just, just about sales tax. But in that discussion, the committee talked about some steps that we believe at least would recommend would be appropriate to move forward and to attain the expertise of, of outside consultants who are experienced, who work with this data every day and are experienced both in a regional and a statewide basis so that we can do some trending and analysis to capture not only what we're, uh, trying to capture, not only what we're losing in sales tax leakage, but also consider things that we hadn't considered. What are the trends regionally? What are the trends statewide? What are we not thinking about that we should be thinking about? We, we've talked about things like fulfillment centers and not that those are, are perfect situation. They have their issues, but businesses that you would not typically think about. And we've seen growth in business areas you wouldn't typically think about. So, a part of this analysis is to consider that. When we talk about the strategy that they, that the subcommittee is recommending, the staff report highlights kind of several bullet points in that strategy, including looking at vacancies in commercial spaces and identifying what could go there. Now, that, that could be things that, that we don't have or have a deficiency and now in the city from a sales tax leakage perspective, or those could be new uses, innovated, innovative thoughts, different types of businesses we hadn't created before, and that's captured in the next bullet item. But then to help us with some market analysis on those preferred businesses and develop some branding so that we can go forward and start, start attracting these businesses to Campbell. That is going to take some time and, and realistically, it, it's not, it's not going to be an overnight thing. But the, the one thing that is clear is that if we wait for the long-term strategically, uh, strategy, we're going to be far behind and certainly going to lose a, a lot of the momentum we gained in past years. So, that, that is in essence, the recommendation. I can go through each of these strategies. What we're looking for tonight is some feedback from the council on the recommendation to go forward in solicit proposals. Um, I wanted to be sure that I was clear with regard to those proposals that were not suggesting a sole source. In this situation, we would look at an RFQ or, or informal proposals based on the scope of services the council was okay with. Uh, and that we, we would bring that, those proposals back to the council for approval, assuming that that, that contract's greater than fifty thousand dollars. So, with that, I am available to answer questions on the strategy and the thought process. And I know we have Councilmember Gibbons here, uh, who is also on that subcommittee. And Councilmember Landry is also on that committee. She is not present this evening, but that did share with me her thoughts. If, if there's any questions on what she was thinking, I'd be glad to share those as well.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
So, I, I do have quite a bit of comment on this, but there, I don't know if that qualifies as question.
Let's start with questions then, because we'll come back to it. We'll have some discussion, I'm sure. Any, any specific question? Councilmember Lopez?
I think I have a, a couple of questions and, and appreciate all the work that went into this. Maybe this is a question for the city manager or, or for the subcommittee, but can you explain a little bit the metric you hit on fifty percent and, and why that seems like the right amount?
Well, we, we know that there, there has to be a metric. That was just one that we suggested that, that seemed obvious. You know, there could be others, but regardless, I think part of that work with a consultant was, would be coming up with a measurable metric and proposing that as part of the work as well. And it may be something in addition or separate from that. That was just an example of, of what we thought would be a good one to explain metrics when we, when we.
I, I see. So, that may not be finalized tonight. That's fine.
Correct.
Okay. My, my other question, just a, a procedural one, with something like this, and, and I'm just thinking, trying to think outside the box, would there be an opportunity to potentially look at academic departments? We, you know, Sanford or some of the other universities or, or, uh, you know, there, there may be, uh, local think tanks. We, we have such rich, rich resources in, in the Bay Area that I don't want to, um, uh, limit us. So, would, have we done in the past? Would that be something we can look at?
Well, the easy answer is yes. It's something we could look at. We, we did not look at that in this case. Uh, there is some resources out there. We'd have to find them. It does take some management of those, just as if a consultant, but that's something that the council is pleasure that we could look at and explore. Yeah.
That's all for my questions, man.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? So, open up to the public. Is there anybody like to, in the public like to comment on this? Nobody?
Nothing online.
Okay, let's bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Gibbons, do you want to start?
I, I would appreciate that. Thank you so much. So, I think the city manager was making an effort to help move this topic and discussion on. Unfortunately, the year ran out on us and the subcommittee did not have an opportunity to review the material that's in this staff report. I'm not sure we really reached some of these conclusions. What we were appreciative of was one, that staff was clearly looking at economic development in terms of money generation, in terms of sales tax and property tax and new businesses and things. Whereas the subcommittee was really looking at it in the big picture. How, what's the purpose of economic prosperity in your community? What are you trying to achieve? And it's not unlike what Councilmember Lopez just said. How do you engage with what's happening in the world around you and how that can bring into Campbell some new and exciting things? We were really trying to, we understood the short-term need because we have lots of vacancies and you can look at sales tax leakage and the report that the consultant brought to us, which was excellent. And I, we've mentioned before that I would encourage all of you to look at that material. Very, very well done. But we're, we were looking at what, what, what is the community about? We talked about the big picture and branding. We know that the general plan's going to come back during the year with the land use maps that supplement some of this land use that would support different activities in the community, but it's not specific. I mean, you're not going to say you're going to put a car dealership here and you're going to put a landscape business here and a, you know, manufacturing facility there. We're going to do broader land use planning on the land use map. So, I think that we also were very conscious of the fact that in last spring, when we did the budget, the council voted to put the economic development department in the city manager's department and have some funding to do that role. So, I think we're really trying to, we hadn't really gotten to a point of going out to, to a bid for a scope of work. We were really trying to, to get together with the, with the city manager and staff to look at economic development more than just money generation, more than sales tax. I'm not sure I can say it any more clearly than that because we, we were still trying to work our way through it. So, I'm not, at this point, I don't think for Councilmember Landry or I that we really are making, we're at a point where we were making specific recommendations. And I think the mayor has appointed a new economic development subcommittee with Councilmember Landry and it, and I think that they would be, and, and Councilmember Lopez. I think it'll be really good to have them follow up with new ideas, trying to add more clarity than Councilmember, Councilwoman Landry and I were able to get to go forward on this. It's urgent that we, the city is aware of the business vacancies and the types of businesses and a lot of the information provided in the sales tax presentation and the leakage presentation can help us with that. That doesn't have to sit, but that doesn't necessarily need a consultant. That needs action by the city and how, how that staffed and how the city manager's office wants to manage the economic development program is still not quite there yet. So, I would offer that for discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez, comments?
Thank you. I'll start off by saying kudos to, to staff for bringing this before us and, and trying to move this ahead. It's a big topic and to, to bite off enough of it that we, that we can begin to move ahead. And and I I think that that desire has been clearly expressed by probably all of us at some point. So I appreciate the work on this. I'm appreciative that sales tax leakage is is a metric that that can capture a lot of other goals and desires with within it. But I, you know, I agree with a lot of what council member Given said about the big picture. And and I'll just list one specific example. I know this may not necessarily be binding tonight, but in the 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 bullet points that 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 we saw, there may be, for example, a desire to support local, small, regional businesses, however you want to term it, that that may actually, you know, maybe we could, if if we were only seeking to maximize sales tax, that you you'd find some other use for the space if it was purely utilitarian. But but I I think part of what we we recognize is is making Campbell unique and special and giving that that small town feel is that I think we want to be supportive of of those local businesses and and give new opportunities. So I I do think that there's a chance for bigger discussion. I I I think I'm regardless that taking this step is is a good one that moves us forward. I do think that that there is more work for the subcommittee to do. My my only concern would be I I don't want that to take away from the urgency because we could easily talk about it for for another year. And so what what I think this does and and what what I think I appreciate staff's intent is to try to keep the process moving forward while we can still fill in some of those gaps because it's a it's a big discussion, but it's an important one.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
So I think it would be a good idea. I don't know at what point in the in the committee discussion of review of the current plan, economic development plan was reviewed or updated, but that might be a good starting point to look at that and review it and and maybe decide what what works in that, what isn't working in that as as some of the goals that we're trying to achieve. I I see it as the economic development, again, tied into regional trends, but I I think we also need to be somewhat visionary and looking at cutting edge, you know, companies, technologies that and trying to attract those types of businesses as well as we keep creating a mix of our moms and pops and and some of our more sustainable businesses that we we have in the community. So I I would look, I would kind of focus on that. I I'm just kind of reading through this plan and, you know, the two, the two objectives of the first two objectives are foster business expansion and foster business retention. So to me, that that's kind of the core of what economic development should should at least be doing a minimum.
You comment? Sure, of course.
Thank you. Yeah, good, good discussion and and good ideas. I want to say, you know, second, let's try to be innovative. That's where my my question was coming from and because there may be things we, you know, that that wouldn't be, wouldn't be part of what we consider the typical RF process, but we have these resources available. So let's try to figure out a way to to make use of them while following the process. And 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 then the other point is that, you know, maybe however we want to capture it, but that one of the metrics actually is targeting some mix of of small businesses, you know, there are different ways to do it, but that that may be something that we value as as much or higher as just the the total top line number that that we're getting.
Thank you. I I do not believe the subcommittee felt that the information and the analysis was ready to go out for a consultant contract. The dialogue here makes that point very clearly. And yes, we took a look at the existing economic development, and that is what led us to the bigger picture, being more innovative, being really, what is the economic purpose? And I I just copied one, I printed out one from another city. And it says it's intended to further the community's quality of life by attracting investments, developments and jobs that will ensure continued economic prosperity. I mean, that really doesn't narrow you in to just sales tax generation. It really allows you, one of councilwoman Landry's favorite examples is when we went to a conference a couple of years ago and there was a present presentation by an incubator person and they thought Campbell would be superb as an incubator hub for all the things the environment is really, we have the different kinds of spaces. We have the downtown, we have the theater that people can rent out for conferences. That kind of innovation in and of itself doesn't generate direct sales tax or other kinds of tax, but it generates the dynamic of the community and future business and and spin off, you know, restaurant eating and things. So that's really where we wanted to try and talk big picture. So I think the the subcommittee could go forward, and I think it would make sense because it was, we were getting there pretty, pretty well. I think that if the council asked the subcommittee to come back in February, give us some, so it doesn't keep going on and on. And that would give a chance for it to be incorporated into the budget cycle coming up. I think the whole staffing and work plans might might fit in nicely with the subcommittee pulling it together.
Let me let me comment here too. I I I don't know that we're ever going to, that the subcommittee is going to make recommendations that not necessarily going to be adopted by all council. So I'm interested to hear everybody's opinions here. I'm not sure. And I'm open to opinions how much another month or so is going to do. Councilmember Lopez, I think I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, that you'd like to move forward, but with the understanding that there are things the subcommittee can do and be involved such that this is a, this is a evolving document. Is that correct? And councilmember or vice mayor Bybee, I think you took one of my points here, which was looking at the plan we had. I kind of had notes about objective strategy implementation. What if we achieve what's worked, what hasn't worked to get some metrics on that? And also the trends I did mention to city manager. As part of that analysis, what's changed over the years? So separate from COVID, before COVID, were there segments that were going down in in revenue, for example, just because those segments are going down? How do we adjust to that? And how do we answer that? I did see that I was actually pleased to see the the initial comment about sales tax, which is one measurement. So I didn't I didn't feel it was focused on that. That was in the first, I think, paragraph or two. So I actually, I like that conclusion or premise by the committee because it says, okay, let's look broader. So I'm I'm kind of in the mindset of councilmember Lopez, if I if I've understood it right, of moving forward, but moving forward with involvement of the of the subcommittee. The subcommittee change, just we'll talk about committee assignments later, was really to get some continuity going forward. We have, we know who's here, who's not. So I I know we've discussed that. It's it's a good thing. But I think that involvement can come without holding us up. I'm just not sure what waiting four weeks is going to do. That's my, that's my thought. So I'm open to hearing what others have to say.
So I I just have to offer that. I do not believe that this scope of work and and staff report reflects the conclusions of the subcommittee at this point in time.
Okay. And the flip side of that would be from the council members here. If it reflects the way you think you should move forward or with amending it maybe, but that's the other piece of it. The other piece of it is perhaps there would have been full agreement or perhaps there wouldn't. I mean, we'll we'll find that out. So any comments, Vice Mayor?
So the scope of work is I I'm a little confused about the scope of work. Is that in the staff report, the filling commercial vacancies based on sales tax? Is that the short term strategy? Is that what we're talking about as a scope of work?
Yeah. Strategies, there are seven bullets. Under short term strategy, filling commercial vacancies based on sales tax and other analysis, and then seven bullets within that strategy, review current conditions, assess current vacancies, identify regional, national chains for services and goods, consider new other uses, conduct initial market analysis on the preferred businesses, whether they're identified or new businesses, develop branding and work with commercial brokers brokers to reach out. So that was that was sort of the the context of the plans that we were, we that were were proposing for the short term, but understanding there has to be further vetting, further dialogue with the committee on the development of that. But that's the plan that we're referring to.
So that would go to the subcommittee to refine and then an RFQ would process would would ensue and
Yeah, and and based on that, we would develop a scope of service, develop an RFQ, and then if there is a preferred, we bring back a contract for the council to consider based on the proposals that we receive.
And the subcommittee will be part of that process or?
Yes, yes.
And I, if I can, I don't think it's it's inconsistent with what council member Given to talk about incubators and things like that. If I look at this, it's not just talking sales tax or brick and mortar. It's research and development. It's other uses coming up with preferred businesses, which can be almost anything. So I don't think it's inconsistent where you're trying to go. I agree with you that we have to broaden that, but I don't I don't think this precludes that happening. I think the direction can come from the committee.
Yeah, and I don't know, there's like comment that the the mayor made, which I agreed with and tried to say at the beginning, which is I I don't see the report as as limiting us to just sales tax. So I don't want to lose, I I I I think it allows us to go broader than that with what's here.
Okay. Other other comments?
I appreciate the discussion and needing to keep it moving forward. I can't be supportive of it because I genuinely believe it does not reflect the work and the information that the subcommittee would like to have had presented to the council. Moving forward is fine, but I don't think that this is the right place to start.
And and if I I can just make a brief comment, I I want to say again, I appreciate all the work that the subcommittee has put in over the past year. And I'll I'll look forward to building on that, making sure we capture that and don't lose it.
Is so let me, is there a motion and we'll see if we have support for it?
Um, sure, I'll make a motion that the city council consider recommendation of the economic development subcommittee to obtain specialized consultant services to assist in implementing the short term economic development strategy.
I'll I'll second.
So motion by councilmember Lopez, second by vice mayor Bybee. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
No.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That passes. We move to unfinished business, which is item 18, extension of the declaration of local emergency. Presentation by again, city manager Brian Leventhal.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have done this many, many times, so I'll try to keep it brief as is required by the government code. When we declare an emergency, we're required every 60 days to extend that declaration and consider whether or not it needs to be extended. So tonight's the time to do that. The declaration would expire January 29th. So this extension, if approved by the council, will be for 60 days through March 29th. The other piece of this, and it's not part of staff's recommendation, is AB 361 that allows for remote meetings. In the past, when we've done a declaration of emergency in October, we originally approved, the council originally approved provisions to allow for remote meetings. There are some findings that you would need to make to go into that resolution. Those are described in the alternatives tonight, but that's not staff's recommendation. So if you approve the resolution that's proposed this evening, we will extend the declaration of emergency for 60 days that would not include the remote meeting findings that's necessary. If you choose to do that, you would have to add that language in and that language, like I said, is included in the alternatives.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Seeing none, anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Nothing on me.
Bring it back to council for discussion or a motion? Anyone at all? Discussion on why nobody wants to do the motion?
The motion. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution extending the November 16th, 2021 city council proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency resulting from community spread of COVID-19.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Gibbons, second by vice mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote? And actually, we have a desk item here. So the motion needs to include a desk item, I believe.
That's correct. A clerical correction to the resolution.
Okay.
So with the clerical correction.
Thank you. And that's okay on the second?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Council, councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikov?
Aye, thank you very much. So question for the council, we've moved to 19. We typically about two hours take a break. It's only been an hour and a half, but we, everybody knows we start at 6:30. So it's been about well, three, is that two and a half hours? Would we like to take it like a 10 minute break or so? Would that be reasonable? Because I have feeling the park was, it'll take a little while to discuss that. Okay with everybody? So so how about about five after, come back five after nine? Will that work? Okay, thank you. So we'll hold, we'll be in recess until then. We move to item nineteen, consideration of a permanent parklet program in downtown Campbell, presentation by community development director Rob Eastwood. Welcome back.
Thank you, Rob Eastwood, community development director. Tonight, I'll be presenting most of this, also assisting me. Economic Development Specialist Michael Thomas, he prepared the report and most of the presentation. So with that, I think Cease will be helping us also with the presentation. I'll just go ahead and sell, say next. So next. So tonight, it's intended to be a first high level discussion on the parklet program. Council's been overseeing and cognizant of this for some time, as you know, the. Parklet are are out there and have been out there since the beginning of COVID. This is a discussion for you if there's an interest on having a permanent parklet program. So what we're presenting tonight is pros and cons, parts of the program to think about. And asking for you to make an initial decision, should Campbell go forward with a permanent parklet program. There might be questions tonight that we have answers to, we could bring back to you. Based on what we presented tonight, if you have direction on particulars, if you're interested in the program, we can bring those back. Again, the entry level threshold question is, should this program be converted into a permanent parklet program? Next. So with this, I'm going to hand it over to Michael. Michael's going to give us some background on what's going on with the parklets. Give you some good information on what the other cities are doing, some of those who have adopted permanent programs, and then we'll come back and go through the policy questions. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Director Eastwood. You're just a little taller than me. Okay, all right, so. The temporary parklet program was extended to March thirty first, twenty twenty two, a special council meeting on December twenty first. In light of increasing COVID case counts. Permanent parklets are under consideration or been implemented in various Bay Area communities. There are more temporary parklet programs right now, but communities are considering permanent ones. As these temporary programs have become very popular in these communities as an alternative dining option. In the face of COVID and to provide a more comfortable dining environment, it also enhances the street scape and urban setting. Of these communities. Back in Campbell, seventeen restaurants and bars operate parklets in forty public parking spaces. Which accounts for about three point three percent of the public parking spaces in the downtown area. Most, most of the parklets are in, are along Campbell Avenue with two parklets in city owned parking lots at. Long Orchard City Drive. But if you've noticed, these parklets, they have varying designs, some have decking. Some have prefabricated trellises, some have umbrellas, so the the. Parklet designs vary from parklet to parklet. However, staff did reach out to the current parklet operators in September and October. To gauge their interest in pursuing permanent parklets. And most of the current parklet operators, fourteen of which expressed interest in. Building permanent parklets, while the remainder set cost and conditions would determine their decision making. Next slide, please. Looking there is an area of the downtown area showing the locations of the current parklet locations marked with the yellow rectangles. As you can see, most of the parklets are on Campbell Avenue with one on Central Avenue and then one at. Abalagio at two oh one Orchard City Drive and then one fronting car two at three hundred Orchard City Drive. Next slide. Excuse me. As I mentioned, other communities have perceived permanent parklet programs include Los Altos. Los Gadas, San Francisco, San Mateo. Morgan Hill also has a permanent parklet program as well. But just to summarize, most of these programs allow dining in outdoor spaces, but also. Los Gadas and San Francisco also allow community gathering. So when these parklets are not in use as restaurant space. The public can use them as a gathering space. Permitting costs vary from community to community, but. They're kind of on the low end in some cases. Los Altos and San Mateo are, their one time application fee is five hundred dollars each. Los Gadas charges for eight hundred for their permitting cost, but that's fully covered by the town's use of ARPA funds and subsidies. San Francisco charges twenty five hundred dollars for the first parking space. And actually twelve fifty for each additional space, so the. That info is a little inaccurate there. And then. San Francisco is using government city funds to fund a five hundred thousand dollar grant program to help businesses make their parklets code compliant. While, as I mentioned, Los Al, Los Gadas is using ARPA funds to cover the cost of permitting. And subsidize engineering fees and construction material costs with grants. For the construction costs. And then. Los Altos and San Mateo don't offer any subsidies, so the applicants pay the full cost. In the case of Morgan Hill, which is not shown on this table, they do have a permanent parklet program that launched in twenty eighteen. But no one applied for a parklet before the pandemic, but they now have six permanent parklets covering nineteen parking spaces in their downtown area. And they'll be considering changes to their permanent parklet program later this year. So and as for San Jose, they're looking to expand their alfresco program. They have over a hundred and thirty permities. And they have invested about seven hundred thousand dollars in transition to permanent parklets, from temporary to permanent parklets. And also using a hundred fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Towards that end as well. So that's a summary of what's happening in other communities. Next slide. And as you can see here, these are pictures of parklets in other communities going clockwise, starting from the. Upper left hand corner, those are images of permanent parklets in Los Gadas. And then to the right is a concept drawing of a parklet in Los Altos. Los Altos is retaining the use of the wine barrels, which were noticeable in their temporary parklets. And then the design drawing below is. A design drawing for Los Gadas' parklets, and as you can see there, they don't have any roofs or structures, but they have posts. Where they could suspend and anchor shade structures, or applicants have the option of installing. Movable umbrellas and string lighting. Next slide, please. And these are examples of parklets of San Francisco's shared spaces program. Which allows for dining, public gathering and outdoor display. So those are some examples of. Parklets in San Francisco. Next slide, please. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Rob for more discussion heading towards policy questions.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, so key threshold question for the council tonight is, is should Campbell consider a? Thank you, Michael. Okay, so key threshold question for the council tonight is, should Campbell consider a permanent program? It's probably the, the initial question. Next slide. And so with that, we put a couple of pros and cons on the screen. It's in the report. There might be additional. A lot of the pros have to do with economic development downtown, leading to the better improvement of the urban design setting, the ambiance. The parklets actually were identified in Campbell's transit improvement plan associated with downtown development. That was a study that was prepared a couple of years ago. On the other side, this has been presented to council before. There are some potential interface issues with the downtown events. This is the weekly farmer's market and the two events sponsored by the chamber. And there would be a loss of parking spaces, of course, with any parklets that are installed. Next. So a couple of questions on contemplating a permanent program. First would be, should Campbell cap the amount of, amount of parklets that are put in on our public streets? And again, two of the considerations, and these were the cons that were presented. One would be just the overall loss of parking spaces for the amount of time a parklet is put in, and again, a design consideration, longstanding discussions with the farmer's market, and Chamber over here now on how parklets can interface with those events. So looking at that, looking at how those events have happened, knowing the farmer's market has come back downtown, knowing at least the two recent chamber events have happened with parklets there. Staff has some ideas on performance standards that would be embedded into a parklet program. One would be to limit each business to two park installs maximum, so they wouldn't spread out too far along the street as a performance standard. And then separately, there is a big question on spacing for the farmer's market to put out enough booths for the downtown events to put out enough booths. If they're bunched up in, in the wrong way, that can present design operational issues. So staff would recommend putting in a performance standard on that, or would limit the, the number of parklets per block from what we've heard from the farmer's market and the chamber. Generally, the design now is generally working. There could be some, some changes. But to use that as a template of some, of somewhere to start from, just in laying out how many could coexist on each lot and the spacing across from each other would be a performance standard we would recommend. Next. So this is a good question on how to permit these parklets, and we've, Michael's done a lot of research into their jurisdictions. I think there's some lessons learned there. Three broad approaches. One would be your standard permitting approach, where the city has templates on drainage, decking, ADA, and someone to have to come in and basically propose their own parklet. And it'd be reviewed to meet city standard and approved. We have heard in San Francisco, they use that approach. There's been a lot of issues on trying to get permits. Sometimes there's a lot of back and forth, and the parklets they're trying to legalize have run into permitting issues. But that's kind of a standard permitting approach in any regulatory process. The second one's a little more intriguing from staff's perspective. And this would be to do a pre-approved parklet design, where the, the city would design the parklet that would go on the street. And this would be both the barrier, the decking, and the railings. And the city can contemplate a uniform design that would contemplate downtown, so there's not a lot of differences between the parklets and choose a design that it believes is more compatible with the downtown. The ease on the applicant end, it's a pre-approved design, they would come in, they would pick their finishes, say the umbrellas and the colors that would go with that, but the design itself would be pre-approved and the permitting process would be more straightforward. On the other hand, there's a cost upfront for designing these parklets, and we'd have to invest in a designer, engineer, architect to create the templates upfront. The third approach would just be a public works project, so that would be going out and building the parklets. It's in with the public right of way. Would cost a designer and for the city to actually go out and build them. It'd be similar to building up the, the bulb outs that you see as a parklet, just be a city project. At this time, we've been advised by the Public Works Director, and there's, there's just not amount of city staff that could dedicate to this, so there'd be a lot of issues with this approach. Staff's recommendation is the middle one. We think it creates a lot of uniformity, presents a nice opportunity to make these parklets look good in downtown setting, and would streamline the permitting process for any business owners coming in. Next slide. Our next question would be, should we consider fees that would go along with a parklet program? One is the impact of parking spaces, and if there's a parking loss, should there be a parking fee? The second is, I see it's adopted an annual fee just to maintain the parklets, go out, look at drainage, and review the parklet on an annual basis. Right now, Campbell doesn't have a parking impact fee. My understanding, it used to have a parking impact fee program, but it expired a few years back. If the city was to contemplate fees for parklets, it would have to do a new study, and that would be a precedent to establishing a parking impact fee. So at this time, staff is recommending just an annual fee that goes along with maintaining the parklets, unless the city would like to investigate and stand up a new parking impact fee program. Next slide. Our next question is subsidies and funding. We know this came up with the ARPA discussion, should some city funds go into supporting businesses in parklets or perhaps other parts of the city? On the screen is an example of how much it costs to permit and build a parklet. All of our staff have gone through estimated full cost recovery on permitting a parklet would be about twenty-five hundred dollars. Our building official has done some research. He estimates the bare minimum to construct a parklet for two parking stalls is at least twenty-one thousand dollars, that's just in construction costs. We have heard from other jurisdictions that can go up to thirty or forty thousand dollars. Again, supply chain issues and in variations in labor and cost can drive that up or down. So a question, there's no end to the cost that goes into that. Should the city contemplate some sort of investment or subsidy that would bring that cost down to help downtown businesses? Next slide. So a couple of options. I know with the ARPA discussion, there was a discussion of potentially up to fifty thousand dollars that could be invested in this program. Couple of options on the screen, there would be not to, to do any investment in subsidies or lowering the cost, and the full freight would be bound by the property owner. And again, that's about at least twenty thousand dollars in construction cost and fees. Another approach would be, as staff recommends, is a, is a pre-approved parklet design, and that would be a upfront cost to get those designs approved that would lower the cost of permitting and streamline the program. I would recommend pursuing that. And then option three would be akin to what Los Gatos and San Francisco is doing, if the city would like to stand up a small grant program. And so one thought might be with fifty thousand dollars, the initial twenty thousand dollars could be an investment on the design consultant. And the remaining thirty thousand, if the city wants to consider, should be, could be used for a grant program for applicants to come in and use those monies to help construct the parklets. City staff does recommend probably a reduction in fees, full cost recoveries, twenty-five hundred dollars. Commensurate with other cities, we would recommend lowering that fee cost down to a thousand or five hundred dollars just to help the permitting process. Next slide. There were some questions, I think in the last discussion on, on transition, and I know these questions have come up before tonight. All recommendation is, if, if a parklet program is approved, that their transition period be allowed to allow a business either to remove their parklet or to apply for permits for a permanent parklet program. We can come back with details on that, but generally, once the permanent parklet permitting program is established, we recommend giving each business owner probably two to three months to come in, either apply for permits or remove their parklet. Next slide. Well, I think there are some questions on storage of furniture. Our recommendation is, if a parklet business owner comes in, applies for permits, is going to build a, a permanent parklet, generally, the time period we're estimating to transition from the existing parklet to a new parklet is not probably that big a space. We don't recommend the city going into storing these, storing furniture or doing additional things that can be considered, but it is normal cost of business to go through a remodel or rebuild to handle your own furniture needs. Next slide. So finally, staff's recommendation is to consider, actually recommend a permanent parklet program. There are many benefits to these programs, and other cities have gone through with these. My own personal observation, downtown seems to be a draw hidden, Campbell. I'll say after four to five months of doing housing element outreach, first thing I want to ask our community members, what do you love about downtown? The very first thing that comes up every time, or what do you like about Campbell? The very first thing that comes up every time is the downtown. So it is the gem of this community in a lot of community members' observations, and it might have a lot of enhancements if done right toward downtown setting. Staff's recommendation is, if, if the city is to go forward with the permanent parklet program, these performance standards be embedded into the program. That's the cap on the number of parking stalls and the spacing. And to have a pre-approved parklet design that we believe will streamline the permitting that goes with the program. Next. And then finally, considering an annual parklet fee, using ARPA funds or other city funds to, to invest in the design upfront that will help streamline the program and consider a grant for construction. That's, that's one option that can be used. And then finally, in the transition period, we can bring back details on that to, to create a space for, for folks either to come in and get that permit or remove the spaces. So with that, next slide. That's staff's recommendation. Alternatively, if the council does not want to wish to go forward with the permanent parklet program, you would establish an end date. Right now, that's March thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. You could extend that or, or have other direction. And again, if you have other direction or questions tonight, based on what you've heard, we can bring those back to you in a, in a further council meeting. So with that, I'll close up and be available for comments. Thank you for our questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Eastwood. So are there questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you. This, for all the work, very thorough and addresses a lot of questions I had. I have two follow-ups. One is in the fiscal analysis, but the second sentence where it says the cost of subsidizing permit fees may be as high as one hundred thousand. I wasn't clear where you're getting that, the number. Could you break that down for me?
I'll ask Michael to address that question.
Well, looking. So, one hundred thousand, that should be fifty thousand, but permitting costs, if you, if you estimate about, there's if you, it should be permitting and construction costs combined, because, you know, if you want to, if you wanted to do a hundred thousand, I would estimate fifty thousand for construction cost subsidy and fifty thousand for permits and the any kind of design, professional design consultant.
Okay, I, I think the fifty thousand answer is like, because I, I see where that's referenced in the report. I, I just didn't see a hundred, so thank you. My, my other question is the, the, the potential standards around how many could be allowed on, on a block or some of those limits? Do we, have we started planning, mapping that out, or would that be further work that needs to be done?
We could map that out, but we can use the current existing temporary parka locations as a starting point. But, but we could map that out when, when we move forward.
Is that something you've spoken with, for example, the chamber about? So yeah, I'm sorry, those discussions.
I did speak with the chamber about it, and they said, you know, officially, you know, they would work with the city to find a happy medium and find a, so a workable solution for both chamber events in the city.
Okay, I thank you. Those are all my questions for.
Okay, I'll ask a few questions. Can, can you explain how the other cities like Los Altos, San Francisco are using these parklets as public gathering places? In particular, Los Altos, according to the chart, didn't provide any reduction in fees, didn't provide any, any financial support. So these are privately owned parklets. So what are they used for in public gatherings, and how do they do that if it's privately owned?
Well, the, the, these parklets are in the parking spaces in the public right-of-way in these communities. So when the restaurant is done operating or the retail business is done displaying for the day and their business hours conclude, when those parklets are empty, they can be used as gathering spaces for, for the public, if, you know, as as an alternative location for them to be.
So they're, they're leaving their furniture out there for the public? I mean, I can't imagine. He's leaving tables and chairs out there, and if they are, they're locked up on cables and they're not usable. So what's an open space? That's, that's a piece I just didn't understand, especially if it's not subsidized, right?
Correct.
Everybody takes it, even the, even the patios today, everybody takes everything inside generally, or chains it up. So what's the, how's that work?
I could look into more of that for you, but I just know some do have benches in them, or some are just, and some are just used for public gathering spaces exclusively. But as for the transition from public, from, from a, from a restaurant use to a public gathering space, I could look into that more for you, but I know some are specifically set aside for public gathering space that do have existing benches in them, for example.
Bill, a question, is it, is in the city put hour limits on those? So, I mean, you don't want people, it's necessarily using a public space like that at three in the morning, for example. So is, does a city, especially if it's a privately owned parklet, can we regulate the hours that somebody could be using it?
I, yes, we, we certainly could. This is, although the amenities may be privately owned, it is still within the city's public right-of-way on city property and as a as analogous to a lesser, we could put pretty much any restrictions on it that are reasonable.
Okay, okay. A couple of other questions. Of the, of the fourteen current of the seventeen that expressed interest, did they indicate any willingness to pay, to pay partially? I mean, any, any, any preferences on permit fees, construction fees ongoing that, that? Because you said the three of them, three said, well, it depends on the cost and all that. What about the other fourteen? It seemed to be, the other fourteen that seemed to be interested, what'd they express as far as cost or cost sharing?
Some were interested in cost sharing, if they were, you know, for adjacent businesses. Some were willing to hire professional, design professionals to draw their plans and then hire contractors to install them. So some were willing to go that far.
Okay, and lastly, I think we said there's forty spots totally, that's parking lots and streets. We just wonder of the, of the, of the people we have, the parklets we have out there, we're talking about two or four, depending on the, on the configuration. Now, that's the recommendation. What's the maximum number of parking spots anyone, today, that any one business is taking? Do we have some that are taking up six, eight, more?
There's the mouse, and you'll see that at in the parklet shared by Willard Hicks, Mose, and Opa. Akie has four spots. And then Abalagio currently has five, and Cartoon currently has five.
And those are in parking lots. Parking lots tend to have more. And then Sushi Confidential has more in the back. Maybe have four in the front.
They have, Sushi has, currently has three in the front, and then they do have a prefab structure behind their building on private property.
Do you know how many, it's private lot, okay.
Correct.
Okay, it's not a city lot, right?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions. Any other questions?
I didn't, I didn't understand what Michael said. You said some, something about, you were asking about the count. And, yeah, you said that in front of Opas and Willard Hicks and Mose, which are three separate restaurants, they have four spaces? Okay, and then Sushi Confidential did have like five.
Yes, they did.
Down to three. And then Akis has four, whatever, but is it Akis plus the raw bar?
And Lisa Bread has three, I believe.
So I think we'd have to be very careful about how many for each separate business when they're contiguous like that.
Right, that's what I was asking, and we'll get into, we'll get into that in discussion, but that's what I was trying to understand.
I know, that, that's what I, yeah.
You know, when you're, when you're requiring two to four, we've got some that are exceeding that. That's why, that was my question to find out, and then we'll discuss that. But certainly, it, it, it raises a lot of consequences, but I know where you're going.
Two would be for parallel stalls on street, or would be for perpendicular stalls in a parking lot.
I think, I think we're actually asking a different question, Michael.
But I do have, I do have maps showing the locations of each parklet, if you do want to see that.
And, but it's a combination of the number of parking spaces, but also what business they're associated with, and if they're contiguous.
Right, and if they're single-owned, for example, the corner with three is different. So let's, let's hold off and we'll get into that, but, okay. So that's my question. Any other questions here? So let's, do you have anybody from the public wants to speak?
We do have one, excuse me, two hands raised online.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
We have two hands raised via Zoom, if you'd like to take those speakers.
Yeah, who do you have first?
First is Mr. Adam Bookbinder.
Okay, Adam, are you there?
Yes, hello, thank you. Hi, I'm Adam Bookbinder. I'm a resident of Campbell in the Union Neighborhood. I'm asking the city council to make the temporary parking program permanent. Our downtown is the pride of Campbell. It's what drew my family here. We love walking over there and browsing the shops. Anything that makes it more pleasant to walk down there is an absolute win. Outdoor dining has been a lifeline to our businesses during COVID. It's a great idea on its own. We've managed to make it compatible with the weekly farmer's market, which is another wonderful part of Campbell, and we should keep it that way. It's clearly a better use of valuable downtown space than free parking. Whatever fees are established shouldn't discourage the parklets. We should set legible, objective standards and make it as easy as possible for businesses to use this program. We should set legible, objective standards and make it as easy as possible for businesses to use this program. This has been a wonderful win for the city. Please do whatever's necessary to allow the parklet program to continue and maybe even be expanded to other walkable parts of the city down the line. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Adam. And we have Ken Johnson. Ken, you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, we can.
Great, well, uh, Mr. Members of the City Council, thank you for your time. Ken Johnson, Executive.
We just, we lose those, Ken?
I think someone accidentally unmuted me again.
No, oh.
You unmuted me, I'm, can you hear me again, it's Ken?
Okay, you wanna, there, I think we're good now. Ken, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, let's start again.
Yeah, so, uh, what I was gonna say is, that I think the really, the first question is, it has to be decided is, do you want to have a permanent park, parket program or not? And if, if you get a yes on that, then I think the recommendations from the staff report, uh, we could support. Um, in terms of, uh, a pre-approved design, that's the number one issue I hear from people when they talk about the parket program is that they just don't look good. And so something that unified downtown with a nice look, uh, would be great. And with that comes a cost. And so the question would be, uh, if and how does that, does that, does that get passed on to the restaurants? Uh, in some form or another. And so the idea of an annual fee and that sort of thing, to me makes sense with them, with a commitment for a certain amount of time to, to, to defray the cost. So a restaurant makes a certain, if you're gonna do it, a restaurant would make a certain commitment to a, a timeframe to make that work. Um, and that, uh, the other thing I might suggest would be to rec- to require a certain number of restaurants to participate in a permanent parket program before, so it's not just one or two restaurants that the program has a commitment from a minimum number of restaurants to make it seem uniform and, uh, um, consistent throughout downtown. You know, the issues with the chamber in our events, as I told Michael, will, we're gonna balance and do what we need to do for the betterment of downtown Campbell. And that's at your direction. So, uh, whatever we can do to support it, one way or the other, we're happy to do so.
Okay, thank you, Ken. And appreciate your, your working with the city, you know, as always, um, to try to make it work for everybody. Thank you. Okay, so anybody else, nobody else here? So let's bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Givens, I see you reaching for your.
I appreciate you looking this way. It is, it is hard, it always has been. I know. So thank you all. Um, so, um, i- uh, as we are thinking about the initial question, which is, do we want a parko program, um, permanent parket program? Um, I'd like to just, um, ask a few what I would call, um, uh, unintended consequences and assumptions, and just make sure that we think about those when we make the decision. So, um, I think it's important when we look at the number of parking spaces that are being discussed for the parket program. It's, um, I think the context of looking at all the parking available in the city doesn't quite suit um, the analysis. We should look at the, at least consider the data on the parking spaces in the downtown, which would be Campbell Ave and all of the cross streets. We not, should not include the private parking lots. Um, and I'm, I don't think we should consider the city parking garages, at least at this point. The reason I say that is that the street parking, and we know this from, from our, uh, previous experience with shutting the street down. There is value to both the restaurants and the retail businesses for, um, on-street parking. So I think the analysis really needs to be sure and understand the impact. Um, the second, um, comment I have is, um, and I think Michael alluded to it, is are there potentials for side streets rather than Campbell Ave, something like that? The staff report brought up, which I think is extremely important, is how do you balance across the street? How do you stagger them? And that to me, uh, means how do you prioritize between businesses? Is it a lottery? Because there will be, and are already situations where you have competing businesses on both sides of the street. Uh, and, uh, perhaps the most significant for, uh, m- my unintended consequences, uh, comment is, what about the impact on the neighborhood? We are, um, we have had significant challenges of, of, um, particularly weekend, nighttime when weekend parking's expanding into the neighborhoods. We've had problems with, um, people, uh, in less than sober conditions, um, utilizing people's private, um, lawns and doing damage, um, into the neighborhoods. And that's gone in several, uh, blocks all around downtown. So, um, I think it's not to say I'm opposed to permanent parklets, but I think we really have to be sure and understand what it is that we're asking for in terms of the restaurants, assuming that we're keeping it just for restaurants. What does it mean for the retail? And what does it mean for the neighbors? We know we're gonna lose, um, a ton of parking here at City Hall in the not-too-distant future. There may be other parking that we're going to be losing depending on other things down the line. So I think we have to be, as much as we want to support our restaurants, which, um, I, I certainly think the council has been consistent and, and very, uh, committed to maintaining and supporting, um, our businesses in the downtown. Um, we have to look at, at now, we have to, if we're talking permanent, we have to look at the full picture. Um, and I would add one other side comment, uh, two more, two more side comments for now. Um, is, um, what are we gonna do about the rest of the city? I think that that's an important question. And, um, the other one is, I did send, uh, what Randy Mustard said when he was here the other week, he referenced the, um, parking, uh, parket program in Morgan Hill. Um, Michael mentioned it briefly. They have a very, very good document, and I did send it to staff, and I think it would be helpful if council had access to that just to see what a program is. Not the least of which was, we've had this problem, which is, it includes instructions on what kind of heaters are acceptable. And whether they go under or, um, have canopies or not and different things. So it was, it's a really, what I like, what, what, by looking at that, it made me think of the unintended consequences in the bigger picture. So, um, I think that, um, it makes sense to have parklets, but I'm not sure we're totally understanding of what that really means right now. And just to say, start with where we are at, I don't think there's been enough thought. It's, it's been hit or miss scope, uh, helter-skelter to be where we are right now. I think we have to look at it as a clean slate and figure out what's right for the downtown and the businesses and, and the neighbors as well. To start.
Anyone else, comments? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll start, um, big picture and, and then get into some more specifics. Um, where I start with this, and, and I, I think some of the, um, comments, uh, address this well. Um, is that when, when I consider, uh, a, a permanent program and, and, um, why, you, you know, the, what the parklets have, have looked like, wha- or the, um, time that, that we've been having this little experiment. Um, I, I see it as a public benefit that increases, that adds to the appeal of downtown, that increases the walkability. Um, and I think the big missing piece is, is Ken, uh, hit upon his comment, I, I think it is, uh, in increasing the, uh, the, the, the visual appeal of, of what that looks like, which, which I think has, has been missing, even though I think the program has been successful in, in other ways. Um, so I'm, I'm personally not looking at this as, uh, only benefiting a few businesses. I, I think it's, it's a benefit to, to the public, which is why, uh, I, I think that this is worth our time and considerations to really get this right and support, balance both, uh, the, helping the businesses with, with the broader community. So, big picture, I'm, I'm supportive of a permanent, uh, uh, program. I'm supportive of, um, a lot of, uh, staff recommendations. Um, with, with maybe just, uh, a few additions or, or items for consideration or, or discussion. Um, I, I, I think, uh, i- it's an interesting idea to, uh, given what, what I said about this being a, a public benefit for the community. It's interesting to explore, uh, using the parklets as a, 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 a public space, uh, when, uh, outside of business hours. And I think the mayor raises some good questions about that. Um, uh, but i- it's worth exploring whether we can do this and, and build that into the design standards. Um, I, for example, I'm not sure if I've, I've seen this locally as much, but I know I've seen in, uh, New York, they have more of a, 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 a bench setup that, that's harder to remove, but does open up the space, um, for, for general usage. Uh, tables, I, I think there may be ways to do that, um, that, uh, and, and encourage that in, in the standards. Um, I'm, I'm open to, um, uh, I, you know, setting, uh, a given fee for one or two spaces. Um, and, and then, if, if we allow more, and I'm not, I'm not sure that the, that won't agree with it, but it, on allowing more, but if we would allow more, um, to, to have the first wanted to be subsidized by the city, and then anything beyond that, the, if, if there's capacity and, and the standards allow, um, to have that cost be unsubsidized and, and borne by the businesses. Because I don't want to completely, um, uh, limit an expansion to businesses that are successful and want to make use of more. Um, but we do have to balance, uh, that's a question of balancing those, those different, uh, uh, some of the, the trade-offs. Um, so exploring that in, in the fee structure. Um, I, I'd be open also to a, a modest grant program, maybe having a lottery or, or capping the amount. Um, but, but I, I think that'd be a, a, a good one-time use of ARPA funds that where, where I think with a fairly, especially if we tap in and there's a lottery, with a fairly modest investment, it, it could have a big impact for, for businesses. So, um, in addition, I think that's option two and three, um, of the staff, staff recommendations on, on that item. Uh, I would be supportive. Um, I, I, I think the toughest, the toughest question is, is, uh, what do we do with contiguous, uh, uh, spaces and um, open to, to hearing more discussion. Um, it may be that, uh, some kind of lottery approach is, is the best one. Um, I don't want to unfairly penalize businesses just because they happen to be next to, next to each other. Um, that doesn't feel, uh, fair and equitable, um, to completely limit it. Um, but, but maybe there, there's, uh, somewhere in, in the standards or something in, in, in the fee structure um, to, to try to, um, encourage the kind of balance that we want. I also want to highlight the concern on, on that same point. Um, in, in the staff report, the impact on, on the, uh, farmer's market and events. And I really appreciate, um, the willingness to work with the city, especially the, the chamber. Um, I, I am aware that some of the, the current setup, which, not that we have to keep the current setup and layout, um, but it says here that, uh, currently there's been a thirty percent reduction, um, in the number of vendors. And, and I keep being the current configuration of parklets may cap that and keep them from, from expanding back. So even though I think it has been successful, um, I think there's less vendors than we would normally be, be used to. And so, um, I think that's one of the balances that, that we have to, uh, consider. Uh, and also like the suggestions that have been made, uh, for, you know, can we potentially look at the rest of the city? Um, to open up, uh, you know, places where, where this makes sense. Yeah, it's a second phase to, to the, the, the program, but, but I love the idea of where it makes sense, um, expanding that and uh, allowing other businesses to, to benefit. So I'll, I'll stop there. I appreciate where the discussion goes and thoughts on some of these other questions, but I appreciate uh, staff and the community's willingness to work on this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, um, I initially with the temporary parklets, um, had a concern about the loss of parking in the downtown because parking is a premium. We're gonna be losing parking here at, at City Hall in, in the Civic Center. Um, but it seems like the benefit, um, to the community in the downtown somewhat outweighs that. So it is a consideration, but I think that it probably can be, um, overcome. Um, another issue for me was compatibility with permanent parking parklets and, um, events, city civic events, the chamber events, um, and the farmer's market, and it sounds like they've been able to work, work, work out a solution and they can co-exist. Um, I would also like to see, um, more of a visual, a better visual appearance, appearance and have consistent design standards, um, so that it, it, it looks better. Um, because I, I don't necessarily agree that the mo- that it's been that, that appealing some, with some of the, um, different looks that, that have, um, kind of sprung up. Uh, I do think it's important that we look at the citywide. There are, uh, businesses located in other parts of the city that have parklets and have set up in parking lots. And so I think it needs to apply consistently to all businesses in the city, not just the downtown. And, um, so these standards should probably apply, apply to those businesses. Um, I like limiting it to two parking spaces per business, and somehow we need to work out, um, a system and, you know, which businesses that are contiguous, how, how that, how that will work out and be fair. Um, I don't necessarily agree with allowing, um, a parklet to be in front of a, a, a retail establishment, even though there's, uh, an informal agreement between the business owners because I feel that there could be potential problems. Uh, not today, but if, if a business changes hands or there's some type of a dispute between the two businesses, um, there could be a problem there. Uh, I like the pre-approved parklet design, again, to get to the consistency with the design and a better visual. Um, I think the annual fee is a good option. Um, I would like to see some type of a grant program, particularly for those, um, businesses that are ha- that would be struggling to, uh, be able to come up with the initial, um, outlay to, to establish their, their program. And I also would like a little bit more, um, discussion on, on the timeframe and, and what it, what it's gonna take really to get this, if we approve this, to put a program in place and have all of the regulations and the code update so that we're ready to go. And, um, what the lead time is between, um, removing the temporary parklets and implementing the permanent parklets. Because it doesn't make sense for, to me, if we're gonna go with a permanent, uh, program to shut down the temporary and then have, have some gap of time in between in which we're trying to put the program together. So it makes sense to, um, allow the temporaries to, um, exist as long as we can until the permanent program is, is ready to be implemented. So those are my comments so far.
Thank you. I'll make some comments myself. Um, no, I'm, I'm a, I'm a supporter of moving forward, and I think, um, uh, Director Eastwood, it was a thorough report, and I like to, most of the recommendations as is what you're recommending, I like. Um, I, I think that there's no question, there's always unintended consequences, but if we don't start, start taking steps forward, we'll just freeze and not do anything. Um, I, I think that, as Councilmember Lopez said, this, this is an overall enhancement. It's enhancement for the businesses. It's not just the restaurants. I think it enhances the other businesses by having more people there. It enhances the neighborhood by being able to walk to more outside places. I live in that neighborhood over, over twenty years and, and there have always been parking problems. I mean, it's something you live with, living downtown. There's, there's, there's two street fairs, there's summer concerts, there's farmer's markets, there's church events. And on those days, it's packed, but then I walk there. So it's a trade-off, I think. Uh, have there been drunks coming through downtown? Yeah. I mean, but if you live there, I, I view it as if they're walking by my house and they're not driving by my house. I mean, there's not a negative if they're in the neighborhood and walking down there. Um, it worries me a little bit about having public spaces, I mentioned. I don't know how that works, but certainly conversations with Los Altos could figure out what they're doing and how they do it. Maybe it's a benefit, I don't know. Um, I think you do have to conclude the parking garages in, in the view of what we're taking away. We're taking away three point three percent of downtown. I think actually this around the area can absorb, but we have, you know, four or five blocks by, by a few blocks the other way. I don't think it's that bad, and that's not saying that living there. Um, I think that, um, Councilmember Lopez talked about, I think, that like a subsidy and how to do that. You know, perhaps, I, I don't know how this works. I, I think there should be some subsidy, and there should be at least some partial grants. And the trade-in, um, is that these businesses have to buy in, so they have some skin in the game. We help, but we also give them a set amount of time that they know they're getting their investment back, so. We help, but we also give them a set amount of time that they know they're getting their investment back. So we pay some, they pay some, they have so many years to do this. Um, perhaps, um, as you talk about how to, how to figure out the subsidies, maybe it's a declining subsidy. Maybe for the ones that are here now, we have a number. If you want to come in later, that subsidy or that grant is less because anybody coming in later that would qualify for a parklet. Knows that's an expense of the business of coming in there. They can work with community development and see what, what it's going to be and what it's going to take. It's a business decision. If you want to do it, the ones that are here now need help. So I would be inclined to help them more than, more than some others. I think that there may be issues with where they are. So we talked about contiguous places, but I think the starting point is finding out. Of those say seventeen, who really wants in on this deal? And let's see, do we have a problem? I, clearly it's not as big a problem on a corner. We're all three restaurants are owned by somebody. And they have, and they have almost, they have basically shared patios now. So that, that, that corner with Opa is a little different than other areas. But I've gone out there and I don't notice too many in a row where, wow, this is the whole block. And um I thought the street fairs were pretty good. I understand Ken made some concessions there and they had some issues of where to put what, but I think we can work that out. And with all due respect to the chamber, I really support the chamber. I think Ken's been great to figure out a way to work. We got to figure out how to make that work for two events, but we also got to figure out how to make it work for businesses that are there year round. So. Um, there's, there's, there's a trade off there. And the same for the farmer's market. There's a trade off there. I think it was mentioned, maybe we can make more use of side streets or. Or, or, or what have you. Um. Let's see, I'm looking at my notes I scribbled as everybody was talking. Um. Yeah, I, I think the transition becomes important as, as Vice Mayor said, if we're going to do this. Then we have to keep people open on temporary as much as possible. So if we're moving forward, we're going to need to agendize the discussion of the March thirty first. Ending date now. We ought to do that sooner or later. Last time out, we, we went to the Wire and Beyond. And I think it was the right thing to do in hindsight, of course, but. Um, let's look at that earlier so that they know, maybe it's going to be, we're working on this, but it's going to take a while. We need to agree immediately till June or something, just something that gives them some breathing room. And I'm open to what that date should be, certainly into the, into the summer. Let's see, I think um. There's probably more comments that were made and I have some notes that I can't read. So. But uh, I think overall, I, 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 I really do like what you're proposing. I like the city doing its constant design because you're right, the designs now are all over the place. Some are very nice, some are not, but they're not consistent. That's probably needed if we're going to insist on public space and you're going to want to look at that way. You may want to force some benches or something like that. But um, I think also, maybe I mentioned it earlier, I think there probably should be a minimum. Ken has a good point on that. We have to have. These spread out over the downtown. So again, this requires going out and seeing what the commitments are from existing people. And then based on that, looking at what are the opportunities for, for open businesses that might be restaurants that want to come in? Are we going to allow that? Are we not going to allow it? Depends where they are. I'm less concerned that they're all going to be in a row, but I think was said here. How do you penalize somebody if they happen to be next to another restaurant? You say, well, you can have it, you can't. I don't, I don't see how that works. Uh, lastly, I, I do have issues with um, with moving this in front of retail. Um, I think it wa, I said maybe the Vice Mayor. All you have to do, you know, you have a permanent parklet there and the owner of the retail changes. For the, the actual business or the owner of the building changes. What do you do? What do you do when you have a permanent parklet there? Um, and that's one way to mitigate the contiguous, but by saying, hey, wherever there's retail, it's going to be an open spot. And maybe that'll work better for the farmer's market and the um chamber. So I think that is a consideration. Um. That one kind of worries me because I just, I just, it just reeks of having a problem down the road. Um, when you leave it in front of the businesses, the restaurants. They control their own space. That restaurant gets sold, that location changes, they control that space. And they don't have to worry about what's next door, or they don't have to worry about the fickle mind if somebody says, yeah, you can do it. I don't think I like it anymore. So anyway, that's, that's, I think covering it all, but I would say overall, I'm pretty much supportive of the um, how you, how you spelled it out in the recommendations. I'd like to move forward. Any other, uh, Councilmember?
So you actually are all talking about unintended consequences, so I appreciate that. Um, so um. I would, uh, so what I'm, what I'm bringing up and asking, and I'm, I'm hearing good uh comment and feedback on is. Um, what if this happens? What if that happens? So what I'm looking for from staff is. It's not quite clear here, how they would go forward and what are the parameters of going forward with a proposal? So for example, um, what you just brought up, um, Mayor Resnikoff, yeah, we've got the Campbell Brewing Company. Which is directly across from Apes. Okay, how do we balance those? The staff report mentions the part between railway and central. How do we balance those? So I think um, it's really, we need to have a little, um, I, I would appreciate a little clarity from staff. Um, on how we're going to handle, uh, you, you also just said, um, who gets, you know. Who gets one in front and what contiguousness and, and all of that kind of thing. All totally agree uh questions. And the, so I, I think having one design is essential. I mean, that's just where we are. I do think there's a little bit of um education from staff that we could get on what is permanent. The example from Morgan Hill um is very helpful because it's permanent. But it's also um made of, of wood, not concrete. And it allows drainage along the curb, which we know is an issue and different kinds of things. So. Permanent is permanent. I know Los Gadas is doing something permanent, permanent with concrete in some locations. So we have to define what that is. So we might be more flexible with that kind of, of thing and um. You know, um, we're basing it on existing striping of the parking spaces. There may be some flexibility with that. So um, I'm just putting out there what it is that we need to have come back. The Morgan Hill um material is very good, very helpful to understand the magnitude of what um. A uh parket program would be, but also um the benefit of having this consistent image. And supportive businesses. It's all um very, very um good. So um, I'm supportive of um parklets. I'm a little nervous not having um a clear understanding of how many of them and who's in competition for them. And all of that kind of thing. I'm not so worried about permanent because I think there is more flexibility in that. Um, I am worried about um future restaurants. I think we've got one coming in. How does that work? So staff has, I'm going to say several tasks in front of them to come back to us. One is the physical requirements. One is the logistics of working out who gets what, when and where. Um, kind of thing. I'm um supportive of um using some of our uh ARPA funds. I totally agree, they need skin in the game. Um, totally um agree with that. I also think we have to be fair about the rest of the city and figure out how that applies to the rest of the city. So um, I'm just wanting to be sure. Yeah, and even the benches, San Francisco's had a problem with the benches because homeless are sleeping there. So, you know, there's good sides and bad sides to all of this. So um. Is it appropriate, given what's in this staff report is really where I'm getting, going to. I'm fine with money, I'm fine with grants, I'm fine with annual permits. Um, I'm fine with um all of that, but I think there's still more that needs to come back. To make sure council has the complete picture. That's basically what I'm trying to get at. And I think we've had a good discussion about that.
Uh, let me, I don't, if I can, I, I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think there's a value to talking about consequences and ones like. Can I extend to retail? We can envision that, we know it. Some of the ones are not going to, so a lot of the questions you asked to me, Rob, the first step is. Who wants this? And do we have people that are contiguous or do Aki and Campbell really want this? Because that's going to address some of the questions. We may not, and by the way, if we don't, let's just say one of those across the street says no. We may decide that right now that's a no, and if somebody else comes in, it's not a guaranteed yes. It may be, we're going to allow everybody that's here now that wants them to get them. But just because you move in later doesn't mean you can have one, but they'll know that before they come in. They'll know that from community development. So I think. A lot of the questions you asked, I agree with you. We're not close to knowing what to do. But if we just started with knowing who wants in at the parameters of two or four spaces. You can then come back and tell us, we have, we have issues here. This corner has four corners, but this one has nothing for two blocks. Um, the other thing is, if, and thank you rest of the city, that was on my notes I couldn't read. Um, I, I agree, I agree, we have to look at this, but I would say step by step. If we make it work in downtown, then I, I'm definitely for working other places, whether it's a parklet or whether it's taking part of the parking lots. That works, that works so well in some places where it's almost natural and you see it now, and I think it should stay. So I would like to get there eventually. But I think that um, we have to move forward and answer some of those questions. And the last part is. I think we got to go beyond, you know, kind of a checklist of what Los Altos is doing or Los Gadas in particular, who says they're temporary. But they're temporary for seven years until they can figure out street improvements to make them permanent. Uh, you know, I would sit with those community development people and say, what issues are you going through, or even the, the restaurants themselves? Let's figure out what worked elsewhere and Los Gadas, having just gone through this, might have some good input for us. As far as um what should we watch out for? But I think you're right, there's, I mean, not even thinking things like drainage and things like benches and, and what's going to happen. We'll get there, but let's figure out if we have a, a, a problem with consolidation right now. I don't know if we do. So, and then whenever you find out, let's get the, then we also get input more, more input from the farmer's market and chamber. And let's see how it works. Right, Councilmember Lopez.
Um, I, I appreciate the discussion and, and agree with what's been said. And I'll just say that I think the next step could be. Uh, you, you know, I, I think there's a, a small enough number of these parklets downtown and, and businesses that. Uh, the next up could be a conversation and, you know, here, here's the issue with contiguous with across the street, et cetera. And um, explain that to them and see what solutions they, they propose and then potentially have those. Um, if there are good solutions, have that be part of the standards. I think people, people have been very willing to work with us and understand that it's a. Strange time and, and we're all figuring uh some of this out together. Um, and I think the business owners will uh hopefully continue to be collaborative. In that, I, I have a couple other comments, but uh maybe first, uh Director Eastwood, I was. Wondering if you wanted a chance to respond to some uh.
Well, I was just going to point, I, I, I saw a lot of consensus on, on a lot of the points. Um, they're very clear. I'll, I'll agree with you, the, probably the thorniest issue. Is the um, the spacing and there comes to be equity issues in space. I, you know, we got to a point where we were talking with the. The chamber and the farmer's market. We, we had some good ideas, especially if there's a cap on two spaces where I think it might work out, but. Uh, to your point, um, seeing who's serious on coming on board, recognizing businesses are there, hearing that from the council. Uh, I think we'd like to go back, talk a little bit more at the chamber and the farmer's market. Farmer's market probably has a growth model of how they want to grow. Uh, we've made it clear to all sides, everyone has to compromise a little bit. Uh, but a- again, I, recognizing that's a thorny issue, but I think based on our conversation so far. We'll have some constructive solutions just on some performance standards to address that. Uh, that's all we have to add.
I have a couple other, uh, just quick comments. Um, I agree with the discussion around timing and, and making sure. You, this came up in, in our previous discussion on this. Uh, making sure that the temporary outlets go up to. Um, uh, you know, as much as we can to uh overlap with the transition period for, for the new ones. Um, the other issue that, that I forgot to mention earlier is, uh, I want to make sure to really stress um accessibility standards as well as part of the design standards. It's, it's been an issue with the temporary ones. Um, and it's, it's a disservice to the businesses who then uh face. Uh, in some cases, very significant liability, um, and to disservice the community. So. Uh, I think that's important to, to get right. And, and of, of, of course, that, that's always applicable, but to really make it clear in the standards, I, I think would be an. Um, an important part of this transition.
And I, that's a good point. I think one of your points in the, in the city design one was to address ADA, I think, to have that compliance. The, the only last I want to add in is um, and just, just alluded to. I think that in February, we, this sounds like we're very seriously considering this. In February, we should bring back the temporary deadline. Um, it's, it's only, it's only till March thirty first, if I remember right. So I would suggest in February, bring it back. And I would be supportive at least till June thirtieth to buy some time to where we're going. If somebody wants to propose another date, that's fine. But I think we could do this sooner than later and let them know, you're covered for six months while we figure this out. This is not a short process. I mean, it seems like this is a, be a month, many months long process probably to go through this and answer questions. So I'm, I'm in favor at the next meeting. I, I have a feeling based on what we did today. It's a very quick discussion to say, let's extend it out, because nobody seems to want to break it and come back. So if we could, if we could hate to keep adding stuff on, but we could agendaize that to the next meeting. Um, I think that would be a benefit to the restaurants to know, we've taken care of that. Now we're seriously looking at this. And there's no urgency to figure everything out by March fifteenth kind of thing. Any other comments or? Do we have any action here? Just, we're just receiving information or would do I, was there a um?
We were looking for your input on those questions that we were asking. I think we've received that enough to begin moving forward.
Yeah, there's no real motion.
No, there's no motion. We just want to input on those and the staff recommendations.
Is there anything, is there anything, Rob, that you didn't get? Let me ask it that way. How's that?
No, no, I think uh we did. I, I think our process and I'll, I'll work with Michael on the earliest uh we can come back. Might be. Or, or anything, uh, but the extension will give a good indication of the businesses that um, of, of what's coming, because I know that's been a question. It, it might be March, it might be April. But I'm thinking as they come back, settle on the things we've heard from you on. On those issues and we just might have, especially on the spacing and one of the two issues, you might come back to, we have one or two options. So honing down what's settled and we still might have one or two discussion points, just looking ahead and probably in the March, April timeframe, you'll see that. We'll try and form up a program after that, um, and, and then we'll go from there.
I think there's some urgency just on extending the deadline. I don't think there's, I don't expect the same schedule to come back here. This is a lot of stuff.
Uh, and I hear your comment. I, it may be hard to commit the next agenda, but I think, I think we're certainly not going to wait till March to do it.
I would say, we have two meetings in February. I would say if we can.
I think that second meeting in February is much better.
February, but I think, I think the public has heard it, an, an indication here, we want to do that. So we don't hang people out to dry where they fear they're going to go away. And then I understand there's a cost to the city. We're still renting the barriers and all that. This, I think, is a minor cost to keep this going while we figure out the long term. Okay, excellent. I'm sorry.
Just a procedural question. So can we just give direction tonight to extend the, the temporary parklets? Or does it need to come back to the council as an official actions?
No, it, it, it's not on the agenda for this evening, so it would need to come back.
Okay, thank you though. Okay, so that's a good discussion. We got a lot, I think. I ask you any other comment, but I'm not. This is the five minutes that Councilmember Lopez said you lost and it's over. Um, so, so that was a good discussion. Hey, I think we gave, gave you a lot of direction and, you know, we look forward to having that come back. So thank you so much. Um, we go to camp, council committee reports and, and before we get to our, our actual individual reports. Item twenty, accept the resignation of Carmen Linal from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I believe that was a matter of. Um, her leaving the area. I think the letter was in the, was in the packet that she was leaving the area. So um. A city clerk, Dusty, any um comments on that for us or?
There's something to add in addition to what's in the staff report. This is a, a routine.
Any, any questions of the uh city clerk? Okay, anybody in the public wish to speak? Okay, let's bring it back for discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Carmen Linal from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And direct the city clerk to advertise the notice of unscheduled vacancy.
I'll second. A motion by Vice Mayor Byby, seconded by Councilmember Lopez. A roll call vote please.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Byby?
Hi.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Hi. Okay, so that passes and thank you Carmen for your service on that. We moved to item twenty one, approve appointments to Parks and Recreation. Commission, the advisory commission or uh subcommittee is Vice Mayor Byby, Councilwoman Landry. Vice Mayor, would you like to tell us what?
Yes, so Councilwoman Landry and I met um last, I think it was Thursday, Wednesday. Uh, to interview the applicants for the um Parks and Rec Commission. There were five applicants, all of which were very um qualified and enthusiastic. Um, we really had a good, a good group of candidates. Uh, two of the applicants um are current. Parks and Rec Commissioners, uh, one is Sherry Doherty, who has served one term and um Frank. I, Bat, Bat, Bates, who has served a partial term. And um, so the subcommittee after discussion. And, um, so the Subcommittee, after discussing, discuss, discussing the interviews and qualifications are recommending that we reappoint, um, Sherry Doherty to an additional term as well as Frank Betz, Beats? Bite, that's, I'm sorry, bites, okay. Pardon the, uh, problem there. And then, um, also we want to thank the other three applicants and, um, encourage them to stay engaged and apply for future vacancies. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
If not, I'll make.
Well, anybody in the public wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, now we'll bring it back for a motion, please.
Well, just, just.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Y- yeah, brief comment. Um, I, I'm glad to see we had so much enthusiasm. Uh, five applicants is, is really great. And also hope they'll apply. Maybe someone will consider applying to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
And I, I, by the way, please do. I know that Councilmember Gibbons, I served on the committee for a long time. There were times when we had said, we have five, six good people and, and people do come back two or three times and tend to get on or get on a different commission. And, um, I'd encourage them to do, to do that as well, but it was really good when we have five or six good options. And, uh, I, I, you know, the ones we have that have not served two terms, they're both doing a good job. So I welcome them back. So we had a motion. Was there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilmember Lopez. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Hi.
Mayor Resnikov?
Hi, so that passes. And we moved to item 22, the council committee reports. Um, just as an overall statement, um, for people that follow this, we do a little bit of adjustment each year, but for the most part, any outside, um, uh, assignments stayed the same this year for continuity. Moved a little bit around internally because we have some council members staying beyond this year, some not. So the thought was to get some people more experienced in areas where they could be the experienced person next year. So I think, um, worked out well for continuity for the major assignments for sure. So we'll start to the right. Councilmember Gibbons, reports.
Hmm, thank you. Uh, the Association of Bay Area Governors had a quick meeting the other day to extend, um, the, um, pub, public meeting, um, regulation, but they're also having a, a big meeting, um, this Thursday night. So it will be interesting to see what's coming up and talking about new pieces of legislation. Uh, the Campbell Historical Museum had a meeting on Saturday, uh, which was the annual priorities meeting, and they are looking forward, they have a very strong board now, and are looking forward to expanding, um, the membership, um, of the museum and refurbishing the, um, historical museum. The Cities Association of Santa Clara County, um, met and made two appointments. Uh, A bag, uh, what do they call it? Alternate was, yeah, Ivan Martinez Beltran. Um, and then the Measure A Oversight Board was Glenn Hendricks. And Interoperability was Russ Milton and Matthew Hootis. And the Legislative Subcommittee took actions, uh, took no action, but reaffirmed the principles and policies of the previous year. And, um, we will utilize those as we have in the past for our legislative Subcommittee. And, uh, we're looking to have the Legislative Subcommittee meet bi-monthly, given what's going on in the legislature. Um, the, uh, let's see, Silicon Valley Clean Energy JPA Board has met, and they elected me as, uh, Chair for 2022. And, uh, for the record, I, um, we all received, um, email from Mr. Mendenhall uh, about the Climate Action Plan. That is a, a grassroots effort, not related to anything, um, but it ties in obviously very nicely. And then, um, I am no longer on the Santa Clara County Emergency Operations Area Council Alternate. And I also attended, um, just for your information, Code Red for Humanity, which was talking about climate change. And I made a point of going to it because, uh, Senator Josh Becker was one of the key speakers. And he, of course, is going to be, um, our new state, um, Senator. So I thought it was important to understand what his positions and issues were related to that. And, um, we, you made those announcements, so we're all set. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bybee.
So I attended the Cities Association meeting and there were two presentations that were given. One was, uh, a presentation um, by the, uh, I, I would say one of the founders of Nextdoor and, um, she, uh, gave an update and, um, information about how beneficial, um, Nextdoor is to, to governmental agencies as well as to neighborhoods. And, um, there was also an update from the Planning Collaborative and what's been taking place with that. And that was it.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Um, I have the VTA Policy Advisory Committee. And, uh, probably the most relevant item is, um, that we got an update on the transition from level of service to vehicle miles traveled, uh, for, uh, calculating, uh, impacts. And of, of course, we're a little bit ahead of a curve compared to some cities, um, having adopted our policy a, a couple of years ago. And, um, I was also elected to serve as Vice Chair of the Committee, uh, which I'm grateful for.
Okay. Congratulations on that. Uh, my attended really just one meeting, West Valley Sanitation District, and the only change for me there was, uh, somebody has taken over on the T-PAC, which is a treatment plan. I had that for about two years. And we had somebody that wanted that. So past of that, I stayed as alternate. But other than that, uh, all the same and the other, all the other boards come up in the next few weeks, like I think for most of us that pick up. So, um, thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Well, I'm going now adjourn the council meeting um, for tonight with our next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. I did.